We'll call this meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors for November 11th, 2008 to order. Roberta, will you do the roll call, please?
Supervisor Long. Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
And Supervisor Flynn. And Supervisor Floyd.
Here. Supervisor Flynn asked that he would be, he'll be late. He's at a Veterans thing this morning. Okay. We have a moment of affirmation by Pastor Sam Gucci. Pastor?
Thank you. It's a great privilege to have a moment to speak to you all and to be here. On this Veterans Day, I am reminded of one of the greatest callings on all of our lives, and that's of servanthood, as we remember our veterans and the service they have had to our country. Moving from corporate life into public ministry, many things have been transferable, but one thing I've had to kind of retool in my own life that I am sure is also in your lives is this notion of servanthood. It's the greatest calling we have. It's also probably one of the most difficult things of life, because you can't please everyone. And I'm reminded of that in one of the great teachings of Jesus when he says in Mark, Chapter 10, Verse 42 to 45, speaking, he says, "You know that those who are considered rulers over the Gentiles lorded over them, and their great ones exercise authority over them; yet it not be so among you; but whoever desires to become great among you shall be your servant; and whoever of you desires to be first shall be a slave to all; for even the Son of Man did not come to be served but to serve, and give his life a ransom for many." It's just such a great thought for me, as I've entered public ministry and have called, been called to serve, and all the things that come at us as servants, all the different points of view, all the different opinions. And I think of this great leader, and I think of what people remember of him and what he tells us here. And he says, "Look, I did not come to achieve great miraculous things." And some of the things we achieve sometimes, they almost seem miraculous, insurmountable odds as we achieve things. And I did not come here because of my accomplishments and recognition. And I did not come here for power or authority. And all those things are fleeting, and those things can really discourage us in the work that we do. But I came here to serve. And of all the things that I do when I get down and when things seem difficult, things seem impossible, or insurmountable odds and insurmountable things that we are involved in, I'm reminded of this verse because it reminds me of the greatest defining moment of my life will be that that I have served, and I've served well. And like our veterans being remembered, that's the one thing that everyone remembers, is that we did serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, pastors also taken on, their church has taken on a big thing to eliminate the homeless too here from Ventura. So they're doing a great job at that work too, to serve again.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. All right, God bless.
Appreciate that.
We'll do our pledge allegiance. Noel, will you?
I have a card.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You do have a card. Carol Dean.
I'm here to give words of affirmation for Psalms 109. Almighty God, whom I praise, do not be silent; for wicked and treacherous mouths attack me, the mouth of the undersheriff Craig Husband, this morning. They speak against me with lying tongues; with hateful words they surround me, attacking me without cause. In return for my love they slander me; even though I prayed for them, they repay me evil for good, hatred for my love.
Pledge allegiance? Thank you.
Join me in the pledge, will you? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under our individual liberty and justice.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we have the minutes?
Oh, yes.
We have a motion in a second? Okay. We have our agenda review by our CEO.
Yes. I denigrated the good job of my staff who was focused on bringing us an agenda that did not require any adjustment, but I requested that Consent Item 15 be continued by the Public Works Agency till November 18th. So we have that. And there's also on Item 35, there's additional information from the Public Works Agency that has been posted and which your board has received a copy of.
Great. So anybody else have anything on agenda? Motion to accept this? Okay. So we'll vote on that? Yes. Okay. Then we'll move to our consent items, which would be 10 through 14 and 16 through 19. Anybody have anything on this at all?
I have a quick question if I might on 14. I don't know, Mr. Pringle might know the answer to this. The question I have is, we're finding that we need to pay a little bit more in a change order for something we thought, as I understand, we had paid for. My question is, when we bid this, was this not part of the bid documents that this extra work would be needed? I'm wondering if the individual, the company may have underbid and another company had incorporated it and bid higher and they got chosen.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to respond?
Sure, please.
Alec Pringle, Public Works Agency. Yes, there are two contracts involved here. One is the construction contract, and the other is a consultant services contract. This is modifying the consultant services contract. When we awarded the consultant services contract, we made an assumption about how the contractor was going to proceed with the construction work. That was a guess on our part. When the contractor began his work, he was using a different method that required more inspection on our part for the consultant services contract. So we made a good faith effort to try and understand how the contractor could do it, but in the final analysis, it's the contractor's ways and means, and he chose to do it a little bit differently, which increased our oversight costs on the consultant services contract.
Okay, and then I guess as we look at this in the future, these kind of contracts might be something to flesh out at the beginning. Is it something that we could?
I'm not sure I understood the question that we should modify.
We made an assumption. That wasn't correct. That's something that if we were to do it again in the future, we can take care of knowing whether that assumption is accurate prior to awarding the contract?
We can try. The problem is that you want to have a consultant services contract for inspection in place prior to the contractor starting work. So if you try and do it in reverse, that is, watch the contractor begin his work and then put a consultant services contract in place, you run the risk of not having the proper inspection there. But I think the lesson learned from this is we should consider several different options that the contractor might use, and then try and build that in the consultant services contract ahead of time.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we vote, excuse me, before we vote on that, I just want to point out that I have very similar questions of what Supervisor Parks is asking now. We shot him down to Mr. Pringle late yesterday, and I'm just happy to report that about 6:15 while I was sitting in my office, I got a phone call back from him last night. So anyway, he was working hard last night, and he was able to answer the same question. So thanks for being available and hustling last night.
Thanks so much. Any other questions on that or any other ones on this? That's it? Okay, so.
Move approval of that item and the consent calendar?
From Items 10 to 14 and then 16 to 19. Okay. And then we're going to move on to our public comments. And I see we have two cards. Don Fanchana?
Buongiorno, and a morito Roberto here. Don Fanchana, Ventura County Taxpayers Association. I apologize, I don't have a sign, so I just will have to verbally invite you to the Taxpayers 54th Annual Dinner coming up on November 20th. It's on a Thursday, and we're very pleased to have John Chang, California State Controller, as our speaker. I think it's very timely with our state being in the state that it is to have a state officer come down, and there will definitely be a Q and A. And I'm sure we will have some questions for the controller, especially on the state budget, the prison hospital, et cetera, et cetera. It will be at Los Poses Country Club. It'll be at 5:00 PM. We're doing it a little earlier based on the controller's schedule and all of that. So I'm inviting everybody. You can contact our office for reservations, phone, fax, email, et cetera. We've got a great speaker. We'll have a great dinner and a great location. It's November 20th, our annual dinner. Please come. Thank you.
Thanks for doing it early because the state may be out of money. We may not be able to pay to fly down here, so.
That's another reason.
Yes, I'm sure. Well, I guess the cash will be gone and see what they say by the end of the month, so. All right. Carol Dean Williams?
Four minutes, 20 seconds.
4:20?
How much was that?
Four minutes, 20 seconds.
Carol Dean Williams, I did a little research on Sheriff Bob Brooks. He attends Sunrise Christian Fellowship. I want to show you, he's an elder and a pastor at Sunrise Fellowship, and let me show you what they believe: civil government. We believe that civil government is by divine appointment and that civil law should be upheld at all times except in things opposed to the will of God. Except, he took an oath to uphold the Constitution. The Constitution gives me the right to free speech. The Supreme Court gave me the right in Cohen versus California, and that corrupt undersheriff just sees my First Amendment rights. He's practicing his religion. I hope he is federally indicted for his crimes. Here it is on their website. You can get it. Here's his ad for sheriff deputies. They only accept incompetent and liars. That's the only ones they accept. I got pictures of it all. Here's Peter Floyd, the chair, on October 14th, in secret, adopted an oral policy. Here's the sheriff deputies that followed me around since October 21st. Look at them. Look at their faces. Look at them. Look at them, all separate deputies. Look at them. Look at them. And I've got audio of their lies in their reports. Look, that Captain Nelson over in Moore Park. Look at that face. Look. Look at the corrupt officers, incompetent.
You don't have to speak so that we have a microphone there.
All right, hope you're not turning it up. And there's our good old corrupt district attorney, Greg Totten. Look at that mugshot. That's a mugshot. That's a mugshot. And he used his police powers on me, his chief deputy investigator. All on video, audio. Yep, there they are again. Oh, look, you even set security down. Look at that. Set security down. And there's your old Clay Palm County Council. And there's Sergeant King Arthur in his own words. And there's Commander Innison. Oh, I've got it all. I've got it all. I'll reserve the rest of my time for the other items. I've got it all.
That was a handsome group of men I saw there. Thank you. All right, we will move on to our board comments. Supervisor Flynn?
Mr. Chairman, ask the board to adjourn in memory of the individuals on this list.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the veterans in Ventura County for their great service. It's a little more difficult for us to get to some of the various services that are around the county, particularly the ones that go off at 11 o'clock with our board meeting today. But there are 56,000 veterans in Ventura County, and I think I'm certain that all of us would want to say thank you to them. It's pretty fitting that Item 30 on our board agenda here today is the county submitting a grant to try to assist veterans getting high wage, high-growth occupations. At this time in sort of the economic life of our country, everybody's going to need high-skill jobs to be able to survive in a very competitive world. I'd like to recognize the good work of George Compton and the rest of the staff of the County Veteran Services Office. According to their annual budget report, they had 2,770 office visits last year. I was surprised, you know, to see the number. I knew they were busy and did good work. They filed 1,174 claims. They obtained $3.75 million in benefits for Ventura County veterans as a result of those claims. And I know we all look forward to the completion of the Veterans Home here near Saticoy. If the project stays on track, then by the spring, we'll have 60 full-time residents, adult health care center for an additional 50 veterans. That's 110 veterans that could be served right here in Ventura. The next thing I'd like to point out, and I know we may have some philosophical disagreements on the board about the issue of how we're going to solve the budget problems, but I was happy to see the governor recognize that there hasn't been a big change in spending in the last year in terms of the state's overall spending, but there has been a significant drop in revenue, sales tax revenues have dropped, et cetera. And for him to recognize that we have both, we have a spending problem and we have a revenue problem out there. We have a complicated, tortured budget process. We have a complicated, tortured revenue system. If there's anything that's in need of an overhaul, it's the whole way we go about spending money and raising money in the state, and I would hope that there could be some consensus that could come together that could bring some common sense to the whole issue of the budget. But there are so many things wrong with it that this is really the time to just stop and try to, you know, blow the system up and start over again in terms of that. The other thing, on a very happy note, you know, the election last Tuesday, a lot of things that we're all very aware of here, but there's one piece of information that maybe most people are not aware of, but for the first time, the New Hampshire State Legislature has more women in it than it has men in it. And, you know, just as Barack Obama's election represents a milestone, certainly that represents a milestone, and it was fascinating listening to the women talk. They were the ones that were most patient, saying, "It's time to stop saying, you know, voting for a woman or anything else. It's just where are we on the issues?" And they were, there were women on both sides of the aisle, you know, passionate about the issues and stuff. So I think a lot happened that I think many people are very happy about, you know, all the way around in this election, but that, I think, is one that is extremely interesting and healthy. And with that, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I have a couple of them I'd like to call out. One, a U.S. Navy, World War II veteran, Robert Bruce Johnson. He was an active member in the community, president of the Chamber of Commerce, Ventura County Bar, Big Brothers and Big Sisters. He was a city councilman. He did fundraising for Boys and Girls Club, Medical Resources of Ventura County. This is a man that accomplished a lot while he was here. Leo Jennings, he taught at De Enza Junior High School and Ventura College for over 30 years. And then personal friends of mine and Leslie's, Esther Einstoss. She was real active in a large number of good government and civic causes in the city of Ventura. And sorry, we lost her, and our best wishes go out to her husband, Si, and her family. And with that, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the other people on this list. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. We had some major election results here in our county, and probably the most cataclysmic is Supervisor Flynn not getting his seat again. And so we'll definitely miss you. You have been quite an icon here. Additionally, some good news, as I see, at the Triumph of Sanitation District, that little board got a newly elected individual who will be the third vote for making us an all-elected board. So I'm looking forward to that. Something that the residents out in that district obviously want to see also. So that's exciting. Also, I wanted to, from the board, congratulate firefighters out in Newberry Park and paramedics that were able to save through CPR a little infant, and particularly firefighter, paramedic Jeff Golden. It's so nice when they have success like that, and it was nice to see. And it wasn't too long ago that we had a very similar event with that same fire station. So it's nice to see they're out there, and I know they like to see that too, obviously. I also had the pleasure of visiting the Resource Conservation District here in Ventura County out in Solis and seeing their drought-tolerant landscaping. That was all donated. Very nice. You need to go out there and take a look at it. And then I also attended the first meeting of the Community Leadership Committee of the Mental Health, part of the Mental Health Services Act. And we are looking for some more membership, and one of those areas where I thought membership would be needed with veterans, so if we know anyone who is a veteran that may have served and had some issues with mental health, that they may want to be a part of that committee also, as well as anyone else that you think that might be a stakeholder. We do have some openings for that. Yeah, that, yes. And I know Barry Zimmerman is on that committee office, so I think he'll look into that. And then just looking at the volunteers we have in our community. And last night, I attended the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy that went till midnight. So these people go above and beyond. And the final note also on elections is, you know, you see what the voters want, and it was very interesting to see voters approve the bullet train. I was very surprised. And the children's hospital, so they are willing to tax themselves. And here in Ventura County, we had two cities approve sales tax. So that's interesting to see. You think in these economic times, the last thing anyone wants is tax or a bond that's going to end up costing them more, but they're doing it. With that, I would also ask that the board adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and that concludes my comments.
Good morning, and thank you. I'd like to also submit a list for the board to adjourn in memory of constituents from the 3rd District. And I'd just make a comment on the election downstairs in the Elections Division. As we all know, they're still counting. And I've been down there, and the workers are just doing a yeoman's job in trying to, one, be very thorough, be very efficient, and abide by the law, and to honor all the votes that are sitting down there, that have been counted and to be counted. And just to say to the Elections Division, to their staff and leadership in the poll counters, that we appreciate their work. I know it's been long and tedious and stressful, and we appreciate their work. I'd like to also thank Congresswoman Loz Capps. We saw in the paper today, and I received a release from her regarding the $245,000 grant that she was able to secure for us from the Department of Health and Human Services for healthcare for the homeless project for our county. It's just a wonderful, timely dollars to come to help us as we reach out for, in our homeless programs or our healthcare agency, to provide additional health assessment and primary care for homeless individuals. I'm sure it's a part of the success that we've seen in our one-stop that's located on the BCMC campus, and I know the congresswoman has been there and is aware of it. And I'm sure that's what spurred her onto helping to try and find some dollars to complement that project and the work we're doing through our healthcare. $245,000, yeah. And the state budget, obviously, there's lots yet to come. And I appreciate receiving the information from the governor. And actually, I thought the white papers that were developed out of the governor's office that look at budget solutions, extraordinary situations. solutions, extraordinary situations, benefits for Californians unemployed, how to keep Californians in their home with mortgages, I think these are one very, very succinct pieces of public policy and information, and where the governor's office is looking to see how to tackle the huge issues this state is faced in our budget. And so I know we'll all be fully engaged in watching and participating where we can in the solutions that are yet in front of us regarding the state budget. I'd like to also, the CSAC, California County's 2008 Challenge Award document is out, and I'm going to pass this down to our CEO, I probably already has one, but I always look through this to look for best practices, to look, see what other counties are doing and other things that we could, we could take as our own and duplicate, but also to note that we, Ventura County, received an honorable mention for Build It Smart website, the website that the Planning Department has put up to inform community members on, on how the process works and planning. So we were recognized in this document, and always good to get that, but there, again, it's one of those things that we should mine to see what we can copy. You know, that's what it's for, actually, so counties can benefit from one another's experiences and practices. I think I mentioned this before, I'm going to probably mention it every week, because between now and January twenty-seventh, on Tuesday, January twenty-seventh, we'll have our street count on homeless in our county. And it's, everybody counts, and it is important as a part of what we're trying to do, both with the tenure plan, but also in securing federal dollars and any other dollars that might be available, to have a real count of, of what we have in our county and homeless who are living in our streets and river bottoms and all the areas that we know we have homeless in our community. And in order to have a successful count, we need volunteers, and we need lots of volunteers. And it's a very organized outreach into the community, and there's, and there's structure to it, and there's, and there's safety built into the outreach. And my call is out to the county employees, for those of you who may have the day off, who might want to take the day off to assist with this homeless count. I'd like to provide this to our CEO and take a look and see if it's appropriate to put it up on an email blast to our county employees, since we are a part of, significant part of the tenure plan and reaching the goals of that plan, to be able to have a good count. So if we could just put the word out there for county employees, for those who might be interested in helping with that count, that would be helpful. And with the early notice, I think it's good, too, for looking at calendars. Yesterday, another part of what we must do in our county and what we do year after year in looking at families in need and homeless is to really look at those wonderful community-based organizations who help us with that, and a significant one is Food Share. Food Share kicked off yesterday, and I'm very pleased to be co-chair along with Glenn Becerra of Simi Valley, to kick off the Food Share Tackling Hunger Holiday kickoff. And it is really to look at shoring up the, the empty shelves they have at Food Share and, and the stress that's been put on Food Share with, with the economy, issues related to the economy, issues related to folks losing their jobs. The holiday challenge is to pick up over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pounds of food, and we have great partnerships in this, and that Bonds has agreed to put barrels at every Bonds store and POD, the company POD, those big white things, what do you call them? PODs?
Storage facilities.
Storage facilities, containers, thank you. Have also put them at every Bonds store in Ventura County. So what that does, when folks go into shop at Bonds, if you buy one more can of food and you throw it in that barrel, then it's put into that POD, and then it, it really will relieve Food Share of almost $20,000 in costs, just in the collection side of this campaign with POD's help and with Bonds' help. So it, the holiday, Food Share Holiday Food Drive has kicked off. It is called Tackling Hunger. It is in conjunction with local radio stations and, and lots of other private partnerships, and it's an excellent Campbell's Chunky Soup and NFL Moms organizations are a part of it, too. Hence the name. So think about that when you go shop at Bonds, and, and go shop at Bonds. Even if you don't maybe normally shop at Bonds, go shop at Bonds through the holiday season. Give an extra can of food to Food Share, and let's see if we can restock those shelves. And the last thing I'd like to mention in respect of Veterans Day, on the front page of our Star today, there are two articles, both out of Santa Paula. One is that Santa Paula started a couple of years ago, a banner program during the Veterans Day where they put banners up naming those folks in Santa Paula who are currently serving our country. And it really is a wonderful program, and they, and they did that, and they honored those who are serving in Santa Paula. And forty, forty folks were honored in Santa Paula who are serving our country or have served our country in this, in the Iraq War. And the other focus is on a particular Marine who's serving, Carlos Lopez. And he is the, he's a junior, because Carlos Lopez Senior works for our county. Carlos Lopez Junior is going into his fourth tour of duty in Iraq. A Marine, I met him, he's been up to my office, and just, just an incredible young man who is, and you read the article, he's had some struggles, but he seems very strong, and he has a very strong family, and this family has surrounded him to support him and provide him the love and support he needs. And we should all keep him in our thoughts as he is serving our country in a fourth tour of duty in Iraq, and we should honor all our veterans. And thank you for the opportunity to do that and say so. And thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That completes my comments.
Our CEO, you have a comment?
I did want to make a comment about, you know, we're all talking about the election and the election results. One of the issues that we are going to be confronting here very shortly, we're preparing for, is that the Strickland Hannah Beth Jackson race will be in a recount mode, and that will require our Elections Folks to hire about eighty people, staff up an area to go over those, those counts. So that's going to be an expense unanticipated in this year. The office does have the clerk recorder, voter registration office does have enough money in their budget at the moment, I mean, in terms of appropriation, so we won't be asking for changes now, but coming down the road, we'll probably have to come back to the board for over a million dollars to support that recount.
Is this for a sure thing?
Pardon?
Is this for sure?
About a recount, yes, we're gearing up for a recount, because it's so close that regardless of...
I know it's close. There's still a lot of votes out there, right?
Yeah, but, but the staff is gearing up right now, so. Just to advise you that there are lots of good things happening in our election, a lot of activity, a lot of people out, a lot of people voting. That creates a big burden on the employees who actually count all those votes. It's a pleasurable, I'm sure, in terms of seeing the turnout, but it is probably getting tedious at the moment for a lot of folks. So we have to bring in some more folks to supplement.
Well, great. It's, it's good that we've done the right things to be financially stable to be able to do those things right now, because I don't think there's a lot of money other places. Let me just say that in Moore Park, they did the Civil War reenactment, they had over eight thousand people there, and if you go there, the booms and everything else, the cannons and everything they do, it's a pretty interesting deal. You know, it's one of the largest there is in California. When you get eight thousand people in a little city like that, it's a big deal. It was great to see. Also, the MetroLink train crash memorials, the city of Simi Valley is going to conduct a workshop and to give the, and to get the public to have input in establishing a memorial recognizing the victims of September twelfth, the MetroLink collision. So that's going to happen on the nineteenth at City Hall. So it's something neat to see, that they want to, they want to do something to recognize that, when you think about how many people lost their lives and were hurt. And I, too, also want to recognize the veterans and the ones that have served, the ones that are serving. It is great to hear what we hear, you know, people going back for the fourth tour, and they are committed to, to seeing freedom in this, in this world. So the other thing, too, is our budget, I think, from some of your comments, right? During some difficult times, a lot of things hopefully get accomplished at that point, and that'll be good. I was surprised to see some of those propositions voted on in a time when we're talking eleven billion, and somebody, I think I heard from the governor, that it may be twenty-five billion next year, that we add another few more billion dollars. It's a tough, tough deal. So, interesting. Also, I'd like to adjourn, have the board adjourn in memory of people on this list, and one of these is Gary Stevens, who passed away on ten-twenty-nine. And Gary is, was an employee of the county. Gary was hired, whoa, as an Information Technology Service Department, worked for about ten or eleven years here with the county, and passed away. His, his wife, Brooke, was left, she lives up in Carpinteria now, and we just want to say thank you. It's tough to see our own, our own family members, you know, leave and go on, so. Anyway, those are my comments for today. Yes, sir.
Just make a request to the board. Yesterday, we had a real sad event in our, in our family. My daughter, Sarah, our daughter, Sarah lives in Santa Barbara, and we joined her, along with a lot of friends, to, to, to put her dog to sleep, and that was such a sad moment. Still very sad. So I'm going to leave the board now to go be with her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I make, one more comment? This Thursday in Camarillo, there's going to be a rally and a public hearing, a public dialogue, let me say, on this proposed prison hospital in Camarillo. It will take place, the actual meeting takes place at five-thirty at the Camarillo Recreation and Park Community Center on Burnley and Carmen. The rally will start at four-thirty, walking up to the community center. We, there will be a part of the council team, the prison hospital team, will be present to make a presentation to the community and then open up for, for some question and answer opportunity for a dialogue on this proposed prison hospital. So encourage folks throughout the county, because there are certainly county-wide impacts with this proposal, to participate in whatever way you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one other comment, too, in regards to official for the Board of Supervisors regarding our November eighteenth meeting. The Board of Supervisors participates in a test of the county's continuity of operations planned by conducting exercise, simulating the board's possible response to disaster on Tuesday, November eighteenth, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty. So our regular board meeting will start on the eighteenth, will begin at ten-thirty a.m. Let everybody know that. Okay.
And I think congratulations are in order for you, too.
What's that?
Did I hear your daughter got married?
I did. My daughter did get married, the second one, and second one in thirteen months.
Oh, boy.
So that's what I say, our, our home is a little empty, and my bank account's a little more empty, so. But it was, it was a nice wedding. Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, it was really nice. Nice, nice young men. As nice as young men that when you give your daughters away.
How many more do you have to go, ready?
I've got one more, but she's only seven, so I got a little time to wait.
Time to replenish.
Yeah, replenish, yeah, that's right, so. Yeah, it was good. Okay, we have a little bit of time, we go on to our regular agenda. How about number three, our Human Services Agency? Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Foy, members of the board. Ms. Robinson, I'm Barry Zimmerman, Director of Human Services Agency, and what I have before you today are ratification and approval of two grant submissions. We've worked with the CEO's office in submitting these grants, and due to timetables, we weren't able to come forward prior to that time, but it, it's very fitting on today being Veterans Day. One of the grants is for a Veterans Employment Grant. It's a Veterans Action Services and Training Program. It's a million-dollar, thirty-six-month grant, in which will help qualified veterans and also qualified spouses to receive specialized training, assessments, coaching, school training if needed, and so forth, for placement in high-tech, high-wage jobs is what we're looking for. That starts at an entry level of about fourteen dollars an hour, but with progression and career opportunities is the goal there for that grant. Also, the second grant submission is a submission to Livingston Memorial Foundation for a public health nurse, for our Adult Protective Services Program, to join health assessments and profiling of elders and those that our Adult Protective Service Departments run into. We have one public health nurse now, and this would add a second one, and a much-valued resource within our service, services there, in Adult Protective Services, and a great partnership with Public Health, who is working with us on that for the public health nurse. Any questions that you might have that I can answer?
Any questions or any comments, Sean? Get them while they're out there.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to number thirty-one. Authorizations to increase the flexible benefit amount.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chairman Foy, members. Ms. Robinson, your approval is requested to increase the flex credit amount for employees covered by the management resolution by thirteen dollars per bi-weekly. This increase is consistent with the recently negotiated union contracts. Overall, overall fiscal impact is three-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand annually. Thank you for your consideration. I'm open for any questions.
Do you have any questions, any comments? Only, yeah, the motion is...
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Now, this puts all employees at the same level.
Everybody's the same.
It's great.
That's good. We missed anybody? No, okay. We'll go to thirty-two.
Morning, Chairman Foy, members of the board. Ms. Robinson, my name is Greg Bergman of the General Services Agency. Today, we are asking that you authorize the Director of General Services to amend the management agreement with Highlands Golf LLC to temporarily modify the percentage rent and the capital improvement requirements. Recent, the negative impacts of the recent downturn in the economy have put us into a renegotiation state with the current operator. We are requesting that we reduce the percentage rent. We have a, let me back up a little bit. We have a guaranteed minimum rent of a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars a year. On top of that, there are percentage rents applied to gross revenues where we can receive additional rents. What we are asking today is that we reduce those percentage rents from fifteen percent to eleven and a half percent for the next three and a half years through July first, two thousand and twelve, and also to eliminate a four-percent Cap X requirement in the agreement. Currently, there is, four percent of golf green fees revenues would be put away on the side to make capital improvements at the golf course. This is revising that to states that there will be an additional dollar per round that will be put away for capital improvements. Overall, the net impact of the Capital X is, the capital improvements is about flat, about forty-two thousand rounds per year, which is about what we're estimating in terms of the four percent of, of green fees. And then the, the impact of reducing the fifteen percent to the eleven and a half percent is approximately sixty thousand dollars a year. So that would be the net impact to the Parks Department.
Okay. Yes.
I have trouble with this one, because it's a downturn in the economy, so we're going to help the lessee or vendor, but I'm concerned, as a result, we're raising the fees for the public to do that. Looking at other golf courses in the area, for example, like Fridays, we charge more right at Saul.
Yes.
It will make it the highest of River Ridge, Buena, including both courses at River Ridge. And I just, I don't want to get in a situation where we get less golfers as a result of it. And I think there's a point where particularly people are, retirees are particularly hit also, that they're going to reduce the amount of time that they go golfing, and we're going to end up in a worse situation. I don't mind if it's within the same amount that other courses are charging, but particularly Fridays, it will jack us up above them. So I don't know if we can approve this, but not have it apply to the Fridays if that is the case.
You're referring to the one-dollar capital improvement per round?
Yes.
You're saying one-dollar increase is too much, is, I'm sorry?
Yes, I would actually, if you're, if you need more money or seeing less golfers, I would actually reduce, I'd be more in favor of reducing the fees and increasing the number of people golfing there than increasing. But if we're going to increase, I don't want to become the highest in the West County and maybe in the whole county. As a result of that, I think people will make their decisions based on how much it costs to golf. I do. I do.
Well, I could follow up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. You guys, have you guys analyzed what you think the impact's going to be? Has Highland analyzed also with you what you think the impacts are going to be of that one dollar increase? Will that, I mean, sometimes you raise your prices and you increase your revenue and sometimes you, um, raise your prices, you decrease your revenue. That's what Supervisor Parks is referring to. Sometimes you can lower your prices and increase revenue. What do, what do you guys and what did, what's, what's your analysis? How did you come up with this? Is your sense that this will not decrease rounds, the dollar increase?
That is my sense. We, um, Highland Golf is, works very closely with the, the clubs that are up there, the Men's Club and, and the other various clubs. They, um, I'm not sure whether he's talked to them about this one dollar increase, but they're continually discussing potential course improvements, including cart paths, um, restroom upgrades and what have you. And by, um, specifically identifying to the customers that this one dollar is, uh, essentially restricted towards course improvements, we think that that will have a positive impact with the customer base.
So you, you, you don't think this, you think this will generate extra revenue? This won't decrease total revenue?
Um, uh, one more time?
You don't think this dollar increase will decrease our total revenue?
I do not.
You think it'll increase our total revenue?
Yeah, I, I too go along with Supervisor Parks, because some of the thing will be is, well, let's go up there and golf. No, you heard they just had a rate increase up there. It's going to be more expensive. I don't know, how, how much of the retiree market golfs there, do you know?
Well, how much is a senior rate?
No, how much, how, how much of percentage of the golfers are retirees? Is it a big percentage up there? Because I know how, they're pretty picky about it.
Well, the retirees have a discounted rate.
Good morning, Rebecca Arnold, General Services Agency. Um, my recollection is that that population is about sixty percent of our golfers.
Is sixty percent? So people on restricted income or, you know, or pretty much with the way the economy is that if their money's making less interest. I just, just knowing that population, when you go out there and do it, you know, they're talking about, well, I can't believe this costs this and that. I mean, I like the idea that you're going to, you want to restrict money to improve because that does help bring, oh, you see what they did? They built something new. But I'm just not sure in this situation where people are looking at, where am I going to golf and I want to save, especially if I go all three times a week and I know it's only three dollars, but they get pretty tight about that. And the other thing is, well, why go up there? They just raised their fees. Let's go someplace else. And so I'm trying to, I agree with her and, and Supervisor Parks, that idea is, sometimes you raise that and it's not a big deal, but is this the right time to raise it? Is it easier to just take the current fee and let's just take one dollar of the current fee and make it go into improvements or something like that? Because I would be great to say that we're going to allocate. I know it's going to cost us something, but I don't know what the, uh, the manager is getting a little bit of a break during this time. We want to make sure those managers can make money, keep that golf course up and keep running. I understand that.
Well, and our difficulty, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, could you address the senior rate and how that applies and its comparison to the other?
Sure. The, uh, our senior rate is, is twenty dollars Monday through Thursday and twenty-five dollars on Fridays. Um, currently, the twenty dollar rate, um, we've typically benchmarked this course against, um, about, against nine other courses that we consider comparable. There are four rates that are higher than Soul, one that is equal with Soul, and four that are less than Soul. So we're right in the middle as far as the, the senior rate goes.
And the, and when you add the one dollar on to that, where do you end up?
It would not change. That ratio would main, would be maintained. Actually, um, the one that was even would go to the one, uh, it would be four and five. Four, um, less and five more than Soul.
Okay. If I could, just as a, as a comment, we could delete that component. That dollar per round on the set of, set aside could go away and we could not have that. Um, the difficulty with that then is that there will be nothing for capital improvements at the golf courses. Right now, um, I receive complaints about the restrooms. Um, the sewer lines are no longer sewer lines. They are just tunnels in the earth. There's nothing left to, to, to rooter out. Um, additionally, the irrigation wells are in danger of, of failing on us. We're having studies done now. So, and then, of course, the cart paths, which are something that the golfer, golfers really want. This is ambitious. We couldn't do this even with, with the dollar. Um, the things that I mentioned to you, not including the cart paths, are about sixty thousand. So you could see even in that first year, that wouldn't happen. As an operating agreement, I think the county has an obligation to the infrastructure of the course, uh, as opposed to a leasehold where we turn it over and we tell the operator it's all yours. So the problem with that is, of course, the enterprise has no money, um, to be able to assist in the, in the infrastructure needs of the golf course. So we were hoping that this dollar set aside fund could work for us, but we could eliminate it. But knowing that, we would have nothing to do.
Yeah, no, I, I think the most important, the worst thing to do is have somebody go in the bathroom and it's plugged up and it doesn't work and those people aren't excited about that kind of thing.
They're not going to come back then.
Yeah, they're not going to come back. I just, again.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is Ojai and this is golf. And no, I, uh, one, it's the only public golf course in the Ojai Valley. So folks are not going to get in their car and drive down to River Ridge, spending a lot more money and gas to play golf over a dollar increase. If we don't invest in this asset, we're going to face some of the things we face when storms hit us and other things hit us that have really challenged this asset. It is a beautiful golf course and I think the Ojai folks appreciate that and, and, and I just have to believe that they would step forward to, knowing that the money's going into a capital improvement pool so that there would be improvements made to this asset. I just have to believe that there would be support for this and it's not going to, you're not, it's not, um, and I didn't mean to be facetious in that opening comment, but it, it, it is, um, it, it's the only public course there. Um, and if, if folks who love to play golf, um, that, that's, you know, their only choice other than jumping in that car and all the other things that come with that, um, I, I think they appreciate a well-maintained, um, uh, and they play a course for a variety of reasons. It's challenging. It has the, well, let's ask Don Facciano. He's a golfer. What do you think, Don?
We would, and having lived in Ojai one time, we would gladly take.
Thank you.
I'd rather be an investor.
It's an investment. It's an investment. And to be competitive with the other public courses. I, I, we, I, I just, I just think this is, pennywise problem for us if we don't invest in this.
That's right. No, I, I, you're right. I, the biggest thing to me is just the perception of how it came across to people that were raising those, those fees in a harder time. But maybe you could write it out in the sense that our fees are the same except there's a one dollar, uh, improvement to improve the facilities for you.
That is, that's our intent and that's how we intend to advertise it and the approach out.
Tell it up, and I think that, that sounds good.
Put signs up saying your dollar's going to do this, going to do this.
Well, what, if I may, what it will do is it will get the operator from having to pay his capital improvement fee. That's what we're doing where the four percent capital improvement funding set aside requirement of the contract will be suspended in lieu of a dollar fee charged to golfers. So we've let the operator out of that because he's in hard economic times. We're passing it on to the golfers. And if I have a choice of paying thirty-seven on Friday for going to Soul, I'd rather go to Buena for thirty, you know? I mean, it's, that's a big difference, thirty and thirty-seven. And, um, people drive, you know? That's, I play Soul and I live in Thousand Oaks, so I'll go to Buena instead. It's, that's, that's the problem. And I'm surprised, too, that we just spent a lot of money to, uh, change the Soul Park Golf Course and we didn't address this major issue of the, the plumbing and the sewers. So that, that's, that's in the side, but we did spend a lot of money on the golf course and changed it, changed it significantly. Um, but, uh, I, I could support this, as I mentioned, if we don't bump up that Friday because already we exceed the, the region, I think, in how much we charge on Fridays. We're going to bump that up again. I am concerned about the reduction of golfers, so I, 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 I think I'm on the minority of this, but I just, I can't support this.
I, I just want to, well, bring close to this, uh, we've invested a significant amount of money to try to repair this course. Uh, we have professionals that are out there trying to, to advise us in terms of doing this. So I, I'd have to have a pretty compelling reason to, to override them on, on an issue like a, a one dollar change, uh, in terms of price. Um, the, but the other thing I just want to speak to is, uh, I think we have to look at the big picture. We have said we're going to create some enterprise funds and we're going to create, uh, and some other things where we, we work out a general fund. Um, the, the, the enterprise funds, uh, you know, the, the parks are being paid for by sort of the revenue, et cetera. Revenue is down for golf. Somehow we still have the cost and, and the expense of maintaining it. This is the county's golf course, not some leaseholder that we've turned it over to. Uh, we have to maintain that golf course. And so if we want to be consistent with our principles, we have to raise the revenue that we need, uh, to be able to do that work. The only reason we're adjusting this contract is because revenues are down so much that, 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 you know, you don't have, uh, the, the, the current manager who's running it able to, uh, able to cover their costs. So, uh, if we, if, if we're, it'd be a little bit like us saying later in the year when our other enterprise funds come that say we have to raise our rates and we say, well, it's a tough time to raise rates. These are businesses that we've essentially sort of set up here at the county where we said they have to recover their costs. If their costs go up, they're going to have to raise their rates. There is a cost of maintaining a golf course. If this is what, um, uh, our professionals have come up with, I think this is what we ought to do.
I agree with you.
Excuse me, if I may, um, address your comment because I think that's a valid concern that we are relieving the operator of that, uh, commitment temporarily on the four percent for the, the, um, capital improvements. However, one thing that this letter does not address is that, um, currently the operator, or not even currently now, as of November one, the operator lost their sub lessee at the restaurant. Uh, they had sub, subleased to a vendor and the vendor has determined that they're no longer interested in losing ten thousand a month, um, in operating that restaurant. So the obligation now returns to Highlands Golf to operate the restaurant as best they can. Um, it's probably going to be more of a, a support type snack bar situation for the golfer. But, so that's an unknown to the operator at this point in time is that's coming back to him. Um, he's not real, real thrilled with, with the idea of taking on that obligation right now, knowing that the reason that the vendor gave their notice was because that they could no longer withstand the losses of the restaurant. So, uh, we are asking the vendor to take on something that they haven't had, even though we are relieving them on that four percent on a temporary basis.
Could I get, uh, information later, both on the, um, the number of golfers that are golfing there? Maybe we've seen a reduction in the number of people golfing and maybe that reflects on the restaurant. But also, um, could I get a history, uh, maybe the last few years of what this four percent capital improvement funding has, um, brought in? Because you're saying that we don't have any money in that account. What happened to it, so?
The way that this agreement was set up is that it was front loaded with a hundred thousand dollars in capital improvement requirements in the first two years of the agreement. Um, the four percent is set to go into effect on July first of oh nine. So there is not a history. I mean, I could certainly come up with some numbers in terms of four percent times the golf, the green fees.
Or what, what it would have been?
It would have been about forty, forty-five thousand dollars, you know, um, over the last couple of years.
To give an example on the hundred thousand dollars that has been expended in the first two years, you mentioned that we spent a lot of money on the golf course and we did. And it was a beautiful golf course, but in response to our golfers who said, you know, you've got a beautiful golf course, but those bunkers are penalizing me and, you know, this is such a difficult carry on this tee box. So a lot of that hundred thousand listened to our golfers.
I really liked it the way it was.
Well, I'm sorry, yes, that, we were trying to think of, because most of the people who came to us, a lot of that money was spent.
And, and as owners, we want to make sure that the capital, things like sewers are first, not where the tee box is. Uh, all right, well, thank you for that. The, the only thing I would like to know now that we, I realize that we have never collected the four percent replay, um, capital fund, um, I would just like to have an idea about how the number of golfers have been over the last few years. Thank you.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second. I think we can start voting. Thanks so much for, uh, I'm sure you probably weren't prepared to give that much information, but I appreciate you being ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, great. And we will move on to number thirty-three.
Yeah, move the appointment of, uh, Florencia Ramirez to, uh, the Ojai Valley Municipal Bajer County.
Okay. Okay. And then I have, um, number thirty-four, which is to, um, reappoint Supervisor Long to the, uh, Beza County Board, uh, person that goes up to CSAC. You know, she, we know how well-respected you are there and how wonderful job you've done. And, um, your experience is a tremendous asset to us, so we, you second that?
You will.
And thank you for doing that.
Yep. You probably have a lot of good information in the next year or two with all this stuff going. He, are you going to vote on this? He is. Yes, he is. Okay. Enjoy yourself. Thank you for doing that work.
Thank you.
All right, sir. You've got some fun stuff for us here.
Good morning, Chair Foy, members of the board. Mrs. Robinson, Redi Pakala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. Uh, I'm going to give you a brief, uh, background of the, uh, department and solid waste management staff and followed by our division manager. He will give you, uh, his verbal presentation for the proposed rate increase recommendation. Uh, in addition to managing five water systems and seven sewer systems from our Moore Park Office, our department is also responsible for, uh, the solid waste, uh, management of County of Ventura. Uh, over the years, county solid waste staff, uh, has, uh, was housed in different agencies within the county. Uh, my understanding is it was in CEO's office some years ago, then RMA, then now it's in Public Works Agency. And the budget is always in the general fund. Uh, in two thousand four, solid waste, uh, department staff was reduced by forty percent from twenty-two employees to about fourteen employees. Uh, in October two thousand four, solid waste division was added to our department as one of a division. Bruce Baluski, the division manager, joined the county one year later in October two thousand five. As a manager of IWMD, he helped us to make the needed changes, to make the division more efficient by further cutting down in our staff. The division has been reorganized, focused our primary, focused on our primary responsibilities such as solid waste management, recycling, household hazardous waste, community beautification events, closed and active landfill management, and electronic waste disposal for the unincorporated area of the county. Since the first reorganization in two thousand four until now, we have reduced our staff by twenty percent more. The total FTEs were reduced from fourteen to current level of eleven. Uh, there are three haulers, namely EJ Harrison Waste Management and Consolidated Disposal Service, who provide solid waste, recycling, and green waste collection for all of the unincorporated area residents. We provide service to about twenty-two thousand households, uh, covering about nine hundred and eighty-five square miles. That's about eighty percent of the total area of the county. And, uh, this is compared to two hundred and twenty-five square miles within ten cities. In two thousand eight, county population was eight hundred and twenty-five thousand and only about ninety-six thousand of this population lives within UA. The average monthly residential rates for the fifteen service areas throughout the county, uh, unincorporated area is about thirty-one dollars fifty cents. This is compared to a ten-city average of twenty-four dollars fifty cents per month per residence. The average county unincorporated area is higher due to the greater distances traveled, uh, to our UA residents and also higher waste generation factors, rates, and a smaller customer base. With this background, I'd like to introduce Bruce Baluski, who is our manager. And after Bruce makes brief remarks, we both will be here to take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Foy, members of the board. Mrs. Robinson, uh, for the record, I am Bruce Baluski with the Integrated Waste Management Division, also known as IWMD, and we're in the Water and Sanitation Department. The item now before you is a recommendation for an increase in the waste management fee rate from a current rate of five percent to a rate of eight point two five percent effective for calendar year two thousand nine. This fee, originally approved by the board in nineteen ninety-one, is a percentage of rate from a current rate of 5% to a rate of 8.25% effective for calendar year 2009. This fee, originally approved by the Board in 1991, is a percentage of our contracted waste haulers' overall gross revenues and in general supports the county's solid waste management compliance efforts to Assembly Bill 939, also known as AB 939 or the California Integrated Waste Management Act. This proposed increase is in response to CEO's desire for county divisions to lessen the need for general fund contributions when the authority permits. Approving this increase, the first of two projected consecutive annual increases, will allow IWMD to become solely fee-based and independent of further general fund contributions. This is the first waste management fee increase request since the fee became effective 16 years ago. If this fee is approved, it will raise residential waste collection rates within a county's unincorporated area at an average of 72 cents per month per household. Residents will be notified of their new service rates by their respective waste haulers at least 30 days prior to the rate becoming effective per our normal procedure. I would be pleased to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay.
So is it accurate, it's accurate to say we have not been engaging in full cost recovery up to this point in time, but this will get us onto the path to get us to full cost recovery?
That would be accurate, yes.
Okay, so we have been subsidizing our waste pickup in the unincorporated area with general funds. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. You said 72 cents is about the average increase.
Yes.
Now, is that the average increase based on every available property, piece of property? Is that how you do it?
No, actually, it's a range of a low of 57 cents per month per household to a high of $1.8. That 72 cents is actually a weighted average for every household.
Based on the number of?
We have 15 different service zones provided by the three haulers that Ready described. So if you take those 15 zones, you look at the increase in the rate from the waste management fee rate increase, it would be 72 cents.
I guess I'm trying, I want to kind of figure out, when somebody gets their bill?
That's correct.
Are they going to look at saying, I got a dollar increase? Or am I going to get a $7 increase because I got four cans and the other person home next to me doesn't have service because they don't, whatever? And I'm just trying to wonder how they made that. Do they send you the thousand parcels divided by?
Certainly, yeah. Well, it'll come, the hauler's bill directly for their customers, you know, the three different haulers. Within however their bills are, it may have a line item, perhaps they'll say regulatory fees, and this is considered a regulatory fee. And then within that will show the increase, but it would be up to the hauler to specify how that increased. But my guess is it's just going to be a line item, perhaps regulatory fees, if that.
Another thing is, it looks like back in 2003, if that's right, we had 22 employees and now you've brought it down to 11.
That's correct.
So you've done a tremendous job, cut it by 50%. That's tremendous. It doesn't sound like we've reduced any services to the community, right?
No, we're still providing the same core responsibilities.
We just got more effective and more efficient by doing it.
That's correct. And also to add on that, within the last year, we've actually, AB 939 mandates that the county meet a 50% waste diversion rate. I'm pleased to say that the rate that we just most recently submitted, which is 2006, there is a couple of year lag. We're at 53%. For 2005, we were at 48%. So we were non-compliant, but with most recent rate, it's a 5% increase from our efforts. So we are now fully complying with Stay Long.
Good, yes.
Chairman Foy, actually, the Board took a close look at this organization a few years back and wanted the organization to focus on its core responsibilities. And so that was part of that restructuring that occurred, but you weren't here, so that was part of the restructuring.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's tremendous.
I'm very glad to see that the rate is up over the period of time, the recovery rate. Thank you.
I guess I'm still.
Just to kind of corollary your question, fewer employees, but the regulatory requirements keep getting tougher.
Well, that's, that's what I like to, I'm just excited to see that you're able to manage it, keeping the cost under control for the taxpayer and then do this. This is wonderful. I mean, it's good. I guess I'm still looking at trying to figure out, 11 employees, you've got two major dumps, I call them, okay, right? And landfills. And you do a whole lot of other things. I'm just still trying to understand the whole piece of what you're doing.
Right. The county, we, as opposed to say other municipalities here in the county, we have other responsibilities as a county entity. Part of that is maintaining, ensuring that we have a minimum of 15-year remaining disposal capacity within the county. We also have reporting requirements on behalf of all jurisdictions in terms of solid waste generation factors, diversion factors, things like that, that we have to report to the state on a quarterly basis. We also have responsibilities for ensuring that various facilities that receive waste for recycling, but also generate some disposal waste. We also have reporting requirements for those and those are not typical actions that, well, those other cities in the county do not have those functions.
Right. Okay, so you have this, I guess what I was looking at is the idea is that you've come down 50%. Is there more room to adjust that, the idea? Because that's what I'm looking at, is the idea that, the only reason these rates are going to be increased at all is because we got to, we're going to go to a fee-based in a sense and is trying to cut that down. Because it looks like over a couple of year period of time, we're going to raise about $550,000 additional fees to the unincorporated public, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it's going to be a lot of money, half a million dollars, over half a million dollars. I mean, I'm impressed with what you've been able to focus on and do. It's just trying to figure out how we continue to do that during a time when everybody's got electric fees, water fees. I mean, this fee thing is just killing everybody.
Mr. Chair, yeah. Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished with my rant.
I had sent the email to Mr. Pacala asking the questions as to staffing and responsibilities and the issue that the recycling market has collapsed. And in the email that I know you all received, it does reference that, that the, for our vendors, the recycling market has basically stopped as far as having any value for those recyclable materials. So this puts a business pressure on them. But I appreciate the staff's thorough response and then today making comment as to last time increases occurred, the fact that you have two drivers that really establish markets here. And one is for the unincorporated is the mileage, the square mileage, it has to be covered by the haulers and also the small customer base. And that impacts the charges that they need to, that need to be assessed there. I just would hope that we could somehow get our side of the story out and maybe it's just on our website that says, you know, the Board, if we take the action to support this, that, you know, based on the fact that we must have full cost recovery for, I don't know how to state that, make that statement, but there hasn't been a fee increase. This really covers costs. This is, it's not to be a disincentive. My point is I want people to continue to recycle. I don't know how to help the market side of the haulers issue with the market collapsing. I have to just believe some point it will turn back around and it's part of that market cycle. But, so I appreciate the staff's thorough response to the email and the questions I raised.
I have to also say, you know, the department would be more than happy to continue to receive a general fund contribution to continue this work. As noted in the Board letter, the request came from our office to pursue areas where we have other, we have such limited areas where we can pursue additional funds. But in those areas, we have to take advantage of that opportunity. If in fact, we have an enforcement program we have to do and it costs this much and you've looked at it and you've reduced the cost as much as possible, but we don't have a lot of flexibility with our general fund money and we're going to have less flexibility with our general fund money. So this was put in motion during the last budget cycle, directing the department to pursue making up the difference, becoming self-sufficient. And so I appreciate you bringing it back and I just want the Board to be aware that that is the direction from our office and that basically has been a philosophy that I think has been embraced by the Board. So as we find areas where this can occur, I'm not sure there's many out there, but as we find areas where this can occur, we will be coming to your Board and asking for that kind of support.
Okay.
I have a different perspective.
You have a different perspective, okay, good.
I first want to agree with Supervisor Long in terms of wanting to encourage people to recycle and I don't know if there's anything we can do in terms of incentives, cost reductions for recycling bins or more for trash bins because a lot of people can do more. But regarding this increase, 17 years we haven't done this and the fact that we're doing it now at a time when people are hurting the most in terms of the economy, though they may be hurting more next year, I don't know. I just, to me, I'd like to hold off. We've done 17, let's wait 18 so we don't hit people when they're down essentially. It does cost more the way we do trash in the unincorporated area because it's all spread out, a lot of rural areas. It sure would be nice if, and I realize how long it took Butch just to connect with the cities to share with transportation costs, but in terms of trash costs, if we could attach to cities so that we have the hauler that's doing the city right next door to the unincorporated area being the same hauler, you know, I'm sure there's got to be cost savings, but I realize those are complicated contracts to work into, but I think we should put that as a goal. And then finally, I absolutely understand the need to have our services be paid for for the cost that it does, it takes us to serve. However, we're looking at, for example, Seamy landfill being expanded and there are counties and cities that, counties that charge out-of-county fees that are higher than in-county fees and those fees can be used for situations such as this. So I see we have a revenue source potential out there and we have a, we'll be looking at the Seamy landfill expansion. That would be a good opportunity to assure that if they're going to bring in more trash from out-of-county that we get compensated for that. And what better compensation than having our residents not have to pay as much in hauling? So I would like to hold off on this. I'd like to at least hold off on it for one more year and see what the economy is because I, like I said, I don't want to hit people who are already down economically.
Supervisor.
I certainly see this differently, again, looking at the big picture. We are running a deficit at this point in time. This money's coming out of the general fund right now. This spring, we will be making extremely difficult cuts. And if we do not take this action now, then this money, it will continue to run a deficit here. And we've said we want to be at full cost recovery for these kinds of programs. We simply haven't and the question is, do, you know, do we have that luxury to do that any longer? Because I would, the question in my mind is, is that we do this or what will we cut next spring in light of this? And I don't put this as the priority. I think for people to every 17 years get a $1 increase is appropriate relative to less money for foster kids, less money for the veterans program, less money for those other programs. So I think it comes back to, we've got to look at the big picture here. We're trying to be a full cost recovery. We're trying not to, so that the programs that have these kinds of costs ought to be paid for by the people receiving the service. We found out that this wasn't. I wish we wouldn't have waited 17 years. I wish we would have known sooner and we've talked about trying to do that. But bottom line is, the mandate came out from the CEO to get there. This is what we have to do to get there. We're being informed of that. And now we have to, you know, make that decision as to whether we put that dollar increase on now. But if we don't now, we just, those dollars, we're making a decision and those dollars are dollars that will not be available next spring when we have really, really tough cuts that will be coming in front of us.
Which is why, which is why I said I think it would be valuable, valuable to be able to tell our story to the public. Because I agree with Supervisor Parks, you know, we shoot ourselves in the foot in government when you wait 17 years on something. And to be able to, again, whether put a fact sheet together that we, even if we just put it up on our website, it would be nice if the haulers would agree to put a little insert in the bills that said something nice about, not nice, but factual about why this is occurring. If you can condense it down into a statement, but it's tough. And I agree with you. I think, I agree with you Supervisor Bennett in that I, as tough as the times are now for each individual household and that's, that's why I asked the questions I did to try and understand this more, the broader, the broader issue will confront us next year and every dollar at this point will make a difference.
The only difference with this, though, is it's, this in a sense is a tax. It's not a cost because we're already paying the cost. It's not like we're reducing somebody's cost over here and we're just transferring it because we're going to add something and we're still going to keep the $275,000. I understand where you're going to, we're going to spend it someplace else. That's part of my issue. It's a continued cost and it doesn't go because the cost of hauling's gone up. It just goes, we're just saying, we're just going to switch around and try to get some money out of here so we can relieve the general fund of its expense. See, so it's really almost a tax and that's what bothers me.
Well, I see it as a fee for service.
Well, no, I agree with you, but the idea is that we didn't reduce the public's cost over here because we took it here, but we kept it. We kept that here. We're going to get $275,000 this year and another, we're going to get a total of half a million after two years. So we're going to keep that half a million and we just increase their, their expense. That's where I have the issue. It's a supplanting. It's kind of, you know, and that's what I want to do. I mean, if we were saying to the public, we're going to drop our tax, what we charge you for something else over here and we're just going to, you're going to pay for your service, I'd have no problem with that at all. I agree with you on that.
Oh, but I think we've been subsidizing. What we've been doing is subsidizing because we weren't getting full cost recovery and now we're saying if we, in this, in this service, this fee for service.
We're going to ask them to pay the whole amount.
Right.
But I'm saying, but we still were taking this tax dollar from them at the same time. So we're just, we're not, we're not reducing the tax. That's, that's my thing is we're just, and I know we're going to be, in one sense, reducing tax dollars because sales tax are going to be less and a few other things, property taxes, you know, I mean, I understand that. It's just, it, to me, it's a, it's a tax issue. I agree. I think that all these things should be 100%. I get a service, I pay for it. That way it's fair. If I don't have a, if I don't have that service, I pay nothing and there's no reason that the public should pay for me, for my service. But I just still struggle with the idea that we're supplanting that issue and I understand that, like you were saying, we're going to have to cut something else or we're not going to have money to pay for something else later on. So it's a little bit more difficult.
Could I respond? Yeah, I, it's helpful for us to have these discussions, but we are currently subsidizing some people's service and we are currently not funding some of the things that I think we all think we should be doing better and certainly next spring, we will really be saying that. So the same public, you know, the public overall wants us to make sure we provide enough deputy sheriffs in the unincorporated area. The public overall wants us to be sure that we take care of those seniors in those nursing homes and those foster kids. So the question has to be asked, and I would ask it again next spring, should we subsidize these people for something that they are incurring in terms of the cost and do less of, because we will do less of that. I mean, the bottom line is, we don't do deficit spending here, right? So this is, this is a choice. So I think you have to ask yourself, do you continue to subsidize in the unincorporated area this and then have less of those other things? Are those other things higher priority? I don't think there's any question where next spring, those things will be higher priority. So I'd encourage us to look at it.
I understand, but is there a way for us to have this pay for itself based on what it's already receiving by, that's why I wanted to get into, you've done a great job of reducing this from 20 to 11 people. Is there some other additions that we can reduce a half a million dollars a year out of that current budget and then we don't have that? What we've done is we've said, you only pay this much, public, so this is all the service I can give you now. And then we're, at that point, we're not subsidizing, we're not taking away extra money that could go to foster care or something like that. But these people truly are. I mean, you, I would imagine that that budget was a lot higher when you had 22 people there and all the other services you did. That was, so is there a way to reduce this budget? Maybe we don't have some of those fares and some of those kind of things. Is there something else we can do to do that?
No, I, my background is primarily private sector in this industry, so prior to coming to government service, I was always responsible for a bottom line and in doing so, obviously you really need to look at your efficiencies and employee productivity and make sure that everybody is working at full capacity. Having had just over three years now to review that, I'm confident that we're, we're running real lean and in a real lean and in order, I honestly believe that if we were to reduce any other responsibilities that we're currently fulfilling, it would jeopardize our, I don't think we'd be complying with all the aspects of AB 939 as we were mandated to.
Which would be even more expensive if we don't comply.
Well, yeah, failure to comply to state law could be fines and penalties up to $10,000 per day.
My, my problem isn't that I'm concerned that it's a tax or, you know, the same issue.
You don't want tax on these poor people?
My, my problem is, is that it's a bad time and I would like to wait a year. But I agree, we, you know, if the service costs this much to perform, it needs to be paid for at that much and I don't want to subsidize it. It's just that we have been subsidizing for seventeen years. The economy is the worst it's probably been in seventeen years and people are losing jobs and so I just feel like it's a bad time and I would, I would support this if it were last year and may well support it if it's next year. So that, that's my only concern. I believe in the philosophy of it, but I would, I would want to wait a year.
We actually supported it last year when we passed the budget for this year because it was in the budget as a part of their revenue stream.
We supported it last year.
But it was supported last year in June.
I want to speak this because this is, we're going to continue to have this come up in the springtime. If this is a bad time for the public now, right, as you say, it's not a good time to do it, it's a bad time for every, everybody, including, including governments. It's a bad time for foster kids. I mean, it's a bad time for, we need to do more for them. It's a bad time for, so is this a time to continue a subsidy when we have critical, you know, bad times out there? So the implication is sort of it's a bad time, you know, for those, those residents right now, but it is a bad time across the board. All the more reason to say, this is not the time for us to have in our budget subsidies that we all are saying here that we shouldn't have this subsidy. I mean, we're all saying we should have full-cost recovery. So the question is, when do we end this subsidy, all right? Well, we should end it when foster kids need it the most, when the deputy sheriffs in the unincorporated area need it the most, when adult protective services for the seniors need it the most, not when they need it the least.
I have a question of staff. What is the timing for, what is the last date the board can take action on this and have it become effective in January? Pardon?
Today. We by contract have to notify the haulers by November fifteenth in order to allow them the thirty-day minimum timeframe to implement and advise the residents of any increases.
If I may, if we were, board were to decide to postpone like July first, for example, then at that time, we think the rate has to go up to about four percent instead of 3.25%. And what that means is it won't be effective January first, it'll be effective July first. Our existing contracts say the adjustment could be made January first or July first of each year. So if you want to postpone to July, then the rates will be higher. And if you postpone by six months, according to our numbers, under the current proposal is 3.25% for '09, 3.25% for '10. And if you were to postpone by about six months, it will be four percent and 3.25%. The cumulative would be 11.5% versus 12.5%.
When, if I might, when are we looking at the Seamy landfill expansion and the potential for out-of-county fees?
Well, as you know, that's right now in what is a planning division responsibility and where we are in that is the consultants are working with planning on preparing the draft, DIR, the expansion.
So we're at least a year away?
We're some time away. I, planning would know better than I, but it's not any time soon. It's, we have, as I said, it's still the draft.
And it really is something that we'd have to attach when their permit is open. Is that right? It's not something we could do with, I know that's a tough question without investigating it.
Well, I think that's at your discretion.
I just, I do see this as a revenue source, an appropriate revenue source.
That, that would come up in an agreement negotiation that would occur separate from this item. And if, in fact, the board wants to look at that at some point in the future as subsidizing this rate, certainly the board can revisit that if they chose to make this a, you know, pay for itself at this point in time and when, if that rate comes through and the board wants to give some sort of a subsidy to, to reinvest in a subsidy, then they certainly could consider it at that time. We're talking about a fairly small dollar amount, but cumulatively, you're talking about a half a million dollars that your board will be struggling with to invest next year. So that's what the trade-off is. The trade-off is, is if we don't do it now, do we consider doing it later and you're going to miss 272 and then you're going to miss 500,000 in the following year?
Well, I've been offered, we know our 172 funds for public safety are already way, way down and so we've got huge adjustments coming there. I would just offer this as I make the motion. I think the public gets it. The public understands and the public, I think, is willing to say, I'll pay for my trash service, you know? I think particularly if you can show me you're doing it efficiently and I think we have a pretty good job, if you show me you're doing it efficiently, I'm willing to pay for my trash service. This is what it costs, that's what I'll pay. And I think we, we have a situation here where we're saying we've discovered that we're not fully recovering the cost and we need to do that and I just, I think the public gets it from that standpoint. So with that, I'd move to recommend action.
I'll second it, knowing that we can revisit this when, in the next cycle that would come forward to us. So we can revisit it and if, in fact, there's an opportunity through the Seamy landfill discussion to look at unincorporated communities getting a, you know, a better deal or, you know, then, then that, that's open for discussion.
Got a motion in a second. Okay. Does that pass?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the discussion.
There's going to be a lot more of those, I have a feeling.
Let's go to a break.
Okay.
Can we have a few-minute break?
All right, we'll come back to order. Let's move on to our item number 20. And this is a resolution to recognize Ventura County Wellness. As we know, California's FIT Business Award is given annually by the California Task Force on Youth and Workplace Wellness, seeking to recognize business models that promote a healthier workplace. On October 13th of this year, the County of Ventura was recognized as one of California's healthiest employers. That's good. That's very good. I like that. And it was awarded the 2008 California FIT Business Gold Award, one of only four given out. Well, congratulations. And on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to say congratulations, and I know you guys are going to take it from here. So, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. Supervisor Foye, I should say Chairman Foye, Board Members, Mrs. Robinson, I'd like to introduce you to the Wellness Team here. Susan Heller and Renee Davis, they are the ones that really put this together.
Okay. Well, thank you. It was our pleasure to represent the County of Ventura at the 2008 California FIT Business Awards Ceremony. It's actually our third California FIT Business Award. And according to Senator Tom Torleksen, the Task Force Chair, this year, they really raised the bar in the application process, really placed a greater emphasis on program evaluation and outcomes. And that's really to our advantage, and I think why we got the gold this year for the first time. And that's because our program has, those of you who've been around know, that we've continually focused over the years on cost-effective, evidence-based prevention strategies. Our wellness profile helps our county employees to identify their health risks before serious health problems occur. For example, this year, forty-four percent of those who joined our health program, our wellness program, found out that they had a high cholesterol. Eighteen percent found out they had an elevated glucose level. Now, the good news is, after a year from when they joined, we found that eighty-seven percent report increase in physical activity, ninety-three percent report increased consumption of fruits, vegetables, and whole grains. And this translates also into reduced health risks. We know that fifty-nine percent reduced their cholesterol. Forty-nine percent of those who started with the elevated glucose got it down to below the pre-diabetes level. So, on our program evaluations, our employees share continually the improvements they've made in their health and their quality of life. And I just wanted to read for you a recent comment from a participant. "Through the Wellness Program, I lost ninety-five pounds. I don't have diabetes or high blood pressure anymore. I lost ten inches in my waist. My neck is four inches smaller. My sleep apnea is much better. My glaucoma no longer of concern. I've made a complete lifestyle change and walk at least two miles a day. You guys really saved my life." So, and we get lots more like these. And even employees who make smaller changes, like maybe a ten-pound weight loss, have been able to report to us that they've reversed a chronic health problem, or reduced their need for expensive medication, or even eliminated that need. So, in closing, I want to thank you for your support, and also encourage anyone here that has not yet participated in our Wellness Profile, or if it's been a while, it's for county employees and their spouses. And we encourage you to register. You can always contact Renee or myself if you need help with that. It's very simple. And also, I just want to say, there still is more work to be done. And so, we really appreciate your support in helping to create an even healthier work environment here at the county. Thank you.
I know, just coming out of that industry, or being part of that industry, that there's a lot of other things besides people's lives and the things it does for them. There's also a big economic impact to us as a county, the cost of providing that health care. So, there's a benefit all around. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the good work. And I would hope and encourage our managers to always support the employees who participate in the Wellness Program.
Let's move on to our item number 21. Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Ms. Robinson, my name is Jim Dembowski. I'm with County Labor Relations in the County Executive Office. I'm here before you today on a recommendation that you open a second hearing, an adoption of an amendment to the memory of an intimate understanding between the County of Ventura and the California Nurses Association, and its subsequent ... oops, am I in the wrong spot? Never mind. Well, we're a little bit ahead of our schedule.
The nurses have ended their Williamson Act contract, the land that they own out there.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Andrea Ozde with the Planning Division, here asking you to review and approve the 2008 Land Conservation Act contracts. Just to give you a brief background, because I know you've all been through this before, the state enacted the 1965 Williamson Act in order to ensure preservation of open space and also agricultural lands in exchange for property tax reductions to landowners as an incentive. Four years later, in 1969, is when the county first adopted its first set of LCA guidelines and began enacting the program. The eligibility depends on a number of issues, but the main two things to look at are commercial viability from crops and livestock, and also the percentage of the property that is in agriculture. Contracts self-renew themselves every year, so there are always at least ten or twenty years left on a contract, unless the owner or the county decides to non-renew the contract, either entire non-renewal or portion non-renewal. Contracts expiring in the next five or ten years are shown on the map that I've just given you in color, eleven by seventeen. And there are only about sixty-five acres that we will lose at the end of 2008 versus the about twenty-seven hundred that we lost at the end of 2007. We have two main types of contracts that we look at every year. They would be the new contracts for land that is currently unrestricted, and then the rescission re-entries. And those usually are in conjunction with subdivisions, where the new property lines need to be individually eligible for a contract, in case one of the parcels from the subdivision sells. Each of those parcels needs to be individually eligible for a contract. The subvention report is also included in your packet today. What the state does is it provides us with an annual subvention payment, which offsets part of the money that we lose in revenue with the property taxes. You'll see that, well, there are a number of things that have happened recently with the budget cuts. And at first, it appeared that there would be about a ten percent loss in the revenues that we would receive from the state. And now, that's up in the air, too. And the governor last week has proposed possibly eliminating the program, or eliminating the subvention funds altogether. So, unless we hear from your board to do otherwise, we'll continue to process the applications as they come in, and each of the contracts that's currently in existence will continue throughout its term. And that's pretty much how we're prepared to go forward, unless we hear differently from your board.
Can I ask a question? How many applications are you getting? Do you get many?
This year, we have thirty-two, or not thirty-two applications, but thirty-two contracts, eight different applications. And that's a high. We haven't had that many in the past.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, the 2008 proposal, there are eight contract proposals with five new and twenty-seven rescission re-entries. The area that we're proposed to add to the LCA program is a little bit more than two-hundred-forty acres. And there are about one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand acres in the program in the county. In August, I took the thirty-two contracts to the Ag Policy Advisory Committee, and they approved or recommended for approval, all thirty-two. And then, in September, the Planning Commission voted four to nothing to recommend approval, for you to make the ultimate decision on that. The 2008 proposed contracts comply with the State Williamson Act, the County LCA Guidelines, the General Plan, the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, and the Coastal Zoning Ordinance. Public notice was made in the Ventura County Star, neighbors within three-hundred feet of the properties proposed, and also notice was sent to planning directors where their cities were within one mile of any of the proposals. The recommended actions are listed in the Board Letter. We recommend that your board take the actions outlined in the Board Letter, including approving and executing both the new contracts and the rescission re-entries. I'm available for any questions you may have, and I believe the CEO's office might be available if you have questions about the subvention issue.
Questions?
I do have a question. My understanding is that while the intent of this is to preserve agricultural land, that you can also use it to protect open-spaceland. Do you have an idea about the percentage in our Williamson Act contracts that are not in agriculture but in open-space preservation?
Zero. We almost had our first application this year. That option has only been available this year, so it's still very new in the county.
Oh, it's new.
It's very new, yeah.
You know, that is good information, I think, to get out to landowners who have open-spaced zoning, you know, large lots, that they can sign up for this, because it, you know, certainly helps preserve it. I don't know if the county might consider doing a mailing to those property owners to let them know that they can get this tax break by keeping their land in open space, but I think it would be worth it.
That's a good idea. We also are improving our website, so there's a ton more information on there now than was in the past, so that might be another place for us.
And it may be the one applicant that you were talking about is someone in my district that we told about this. I'm not sure, but I, because it is new, people certainly don't know about it, and I think it would be helpful to get that information out there beyond just the county website. So, I'd be interested in knowing how much it would cost to do a mailing of large lots in open space for this.
Okay, we'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend we obviously wait to see what happens. I mean, if the governor cuts all thirty-four-point-seven million-dollar reimbursement, no, no, that's not just to our county, that's statewide, but still, it eliminates the program, unfortunately.
Supervisor, I don't think it eliminates the program, it just eliminates the subvention back to us.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's move on to 22, our Emergency Medical Services. I'm not going to say what job you hold this week, so.
Yeah, I'm still washing cars for that one. Sheriff Foye, Members of the Board, Ms. Robinson, Barry Fisher, Public Health Department. Eight months ago, I was before your board outlining a plan for trauma services within the county, before you today to approve the plan that we have put together in cooperation with the local hospitals and EMS providers. This step is required by the state before we submit it to the state EMS authority for approval. Our plan calls for two trauma centers, one at each end of the county. Three hospitals in the county have expressed interest in competing for designation. Los Rubles Regional Medical Center, St. John's Regional Medical Center, and Ventura County Medical Center. The trauma funding, we had a trauma funding consultant review our plan and review the demographics of our county, and said that the plan is financially solid to support to trauma centers. There won't be any funds from the EMS agency for this. It's, again, a user-fee type system, so the patients will pay for this particular system. After approval, I would submit this to the state. They have sixty days to approve our plan. After the sixty days, I will come back to your board with a request for proposal process, which will include discussion about the financing, how we will do the request for proposal, who will fund that, and who eventually will fund proposed positions within the EMS agency to oversee that plan. So, with that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
I have a few questions. Looking through the trauma plan, the sheriff helicopters don't work after 5:00 p.m., is that right?
Correct.
And would this plan then look at trying to find a source for air transport?
Yeah, the problem we ran into a couple of years ago, we did have a private provider, but there were not enough transports within the county to financially sustain a private medical provider. So, the provider that we had pulled out of both Ventura County and Santa Barbara County, essentially with no notice to us, disappeared overnight. So, it's been the sheriff that has handled all the EMS responses. Anything after hours requires a recall of the pilot and crew chief and paramedic. We do have, within the fire department, do have mutual aid processes where we can look to Los Angeles City Fire Department or LA County Fire Department for a quicker response, although the overall stayouts for helicopters after 5:00 p.m. is very small overall, so we're looking at a very small percentage of night runs.
It's not something that we will have to fund as a part of this trauma plan?
That's correct.
Also, I like the idea of having an East County and a West County trauma hospital, and I would imagine then in the East County would be Los Rubles. And I know that there have been issues with diverting patients, and I didn't see anything in this report, and maybe in the plan, we will look at hospital diversion rates, because if they can't handle what they've got now, you know, what are we going to do when we add, you know, the more severe cases specifically?
Yeah, that's a good point. Certainly, as part of the review process and bringing in an outside team, that will be one of many points that are looked at in considering who should be designated.
And also about, I'm glad that will be studied, because I think that is something to be weighed. The need for pediatric-type of hospital, is that part of the plan, or having one hospital be more for that in the county?
Right now, there's no plan for a specific designation for pediatrics, although that can be considered in the future. We're trying to take a step at a time, get two trauma centers up and running, but that's a particular designation that a hospital could choose to go for at some time in the future.
Then, obviously, looking at the voters just approved that Children's Hospital bond, and I'm wondering if maybe that might be helpful in trying to establish that here?
Certainly, that's something that we could discuss with the hospitals that are interested, seeing if we can provide that.
Also, looking at, there's a, I guess, coordinator that will be provided, that will look at how to make traumatic incidents less, more preventable?
Yes, it, I'm sorry to jump in on you.
Well, and it made me wonder, right now, I would imagine, when we're talking trauma, we're talking like car accidents, you know, motorcycle accidents, those kind of things, other than make sure you wear your helmet on a motorcycle, you know, how that becomes preventable, and then also gunshots, I imagine. To me, that's my guess of the two most traumatic things that are happening, that, you know, and bringing in the most patients. And I'm just wondering, you know, is that the focus, and do we look at the type of trauma? I didn't see that in here, you know, that percentage are bullet, percentage are car accidents?
Yes, as part of a coordinated trauma system, we will have a trauma registry that the hospitals provide information into, which our agency would analyze and to identify those types of trends. It's just not car accidents, motorcycle accidents. It could be a slip-and-fall head injury. It could be somebody falling off a ladder. It could be a complicated-type fracture that needs specific trauma services. So, it's a pretty big deal that incorporates all types of injuries, not just the ones that we commonly think of right away.
Will that be part of the study, too, looking at the type of trauma cases that we have had, so we have an idea when we're looking at what hospitals should provide what services? I mean, it seems a little obvious, have you got more gunshots in a certain area of the county, that's where you're going to want to deal with that issue?
Well, that's, we have looked at the numbers with our trauma center consultant and have looked at the types of injuries.
Okay, that was my question.
Correct, yes.
Also, just looking through this again, I was looking at maps and glossaries, the maps of base hospitals and receiving hospitals, all show the same symbol for both, so I couldn't figure out which was which, so you might want to look at that, and maybe describe in your glossary what a base hospital is. But I also noted on, I think, page 11, you have a listing of, that mentions all the different advanced life support providers.
Correct.
And my understanding is Bell Canyon also has an ALS provider, and it's the City of Los Angeles, so you might want to add that, if that's accurate.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
That's a pretty thorough review of the report. I'm very impressed.
Yeah, no, it's very good.
Barry, on page 12, it does address a variety of information about the hospitals and the number of beds. And I, as sort of a follow-up to one of the comments by Supervisor Parks, I know that VCMC identifies sixteen pediatric beds, which is, seems to be the highest number amongst the hospitals. Is that, I guess, I'm saying, you know, all these other ones just don't designate our?
No, each hospital has specific services. All hospitals in general offer pediatric services. Some have additional services that others may not, so it's up to the hospitals if they're going to designate actual beds for pediatrics.
Okay, so, we are followed by, I guess, Los Rubles with nine, and then Community Memorial with five designated beds for pediatrics. So... So we have the largest number of pediatric beds within the county.
Currently, correct.
Let me just ask you one question, going back to the helicopter thing, Barry, was, we didn't have enough to support, like I said, a private, is that the, if the sheriff wasn't doing that, would there be enough to support, or is this, we just don't have that much airlift needed?
On an annual basis, we're running approximately 150 medical missions with aircraft. The payer mix, you know, that all plays into it, depending on the company's financial outlook, you know, what is their profit margin that they're shooting for, so.
So it's kind of hard to answer, if the sheriff wasn't doing it, would we get that? Because I don't know how much, if we're, the after 5 o'clock, do we have a lot of needs after 5 for?
Not a lot of needs after 5 o'clock, and as you know, with our county, we have lots of wilderness areas and other hard-to-get-to places that just an air ambulance wouldn't necessarily be able to access the patient. In some cases, they've had to land off-site and have the patient brought to them. With the sheriff's department, it's, you know, fly in, you know, they can send a rope down or a winch and pull people out that way, different types of landings to get that patient in there. So at the time, when we had both services, it was a pretty good, pretty good balance. But with the sheriff's department, they're taking care of all our needs at this point.
Okay, great. Any other questions on this, comments?
I'd move the recommended action, there's been a lot of work in putting this first step together, and there will be much more work in front of us, and good questions from Supervisor Parks and more information, so. I appreciate that, from what I've read and heard, there's been cooperation countywide on getting this far. I hope that cooperation continues.
Me too. Good, all right, and we can vote, we have a motion and a second? Thanks, very appreciate all the work. Okay, wonderful. And then move on to 23, our treasurer tax collector.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members, this is Robinson. Here to present the report on the activities in the treasury pool for the month of September. It seems with the way things are going in the financial markets, that September was about 14 years away. But nevertheless, it's appropriate to take a look and receive some reinforcement for the policies that your board has approved, that we use in making the investments, that we were able to achieve a return of 3.51% and generate $4.3 million of revenue for local government in the midst of all of this turmoil. Mr. Hanson's here, if you have any questions, we'll do a coin toss between the two of us.
Good.
Yeah, I do have some questions, with this continuing turmoil, I've always been aware of it, but I never actually totaled up our investments in all of these various corporations and stuff, but I'm asking the question, which is what I think we all have to do from time to time. Given the potential for sort of anything to happen in this financial market out there, we have, by my just rough calculation, $63 million in Toyota bonds, $122 million in GE bonds, $103 million in Wells Fargo, and $122 million in Bank of America. Could you speak to, either of you or both of you, speak to, is that, you're, it's, as I'm looking at it, I'm going, that's, you know, if something happened to Wells, if something happened to Bank of America, you know, particularly the financial institutions having the problems that they've had. And I know we consider those safe corporations, but is that level of concentration in those corporations appropriate? Or would, would having more banks or, you know, more corporations and not as much exposure to one? Because, I mean, out of the one and a half billion, I mean, you're at, you know, you're at eight or nine percent here with some of these, in terms of levels of concentration. So could you speak to the issue of the amount of concentration?
Well, I'll give an opening shot, and I'd like to ask Bob to follow up. One of the things that is a characteristic of our investment in corporate paper is that it's short-term. The lag time between when negative news that would affect one of these issuers hits, and when we'd have a maturity come up, is in my mind, very sufficient to allow us to turn off the flow of new money going in, and allow the old money to run off before we would be in real risk. But I think that it would be good to have Mr. Hanson address the issue directly. Bob?
Good morning, apologize for my attire, I'm, as your elected retirement board member, on my way to a retirement seminar, not retirement for me, but for our system, for investments and benefit. So to make it barely in time, I dressed in business casual. So having said that, Supervisor Bennett, everything that we own is rated as high as it can get. Everything is within the percentages as allowed by law. The law says we can go out five years, we don't go longer than three, according to the current investment policy. As far as Toyota goes, short of putting money in treasury bills at .2 or .1 and earning nothing, I actually feel more comfortable with Toyota, their AAA, AAA rating. I feel comfortable with General Electric, there is AAA, there are very few companies that are AAA, AAA, long-term debt. You can just about name them on 10 fingers, and they would be household names, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Microsoft. Why don't I buy their names? They don't need any money. Chevron, Exxon, they pay like .5, .2. But Toyota, because, you know, it's an international company, and it is a domestic company, as I said last time, they have to pay a little bit more. But I see zero risk, they have the highest ratings possible. I see the whole subject of Toyota and GE as companies that there really isn't risk in.
Speak to me about two things, when you said there's 10 other companies that have similar ratings, you're saying those other 10 companies don't offer short-term paper for us to buy?
They don't need any money, that's the problem. Exxon and Chevron, you know where they get their money. And Microsoft, they can't spend it all, Johnson &amp; Johnson has tons of money. So when you go into the commercial paper market, and these are not bonds that we own, these are called commercial paper notes, they don't exceed, by law, 270 days. They're just not in the market, I mean, they might be paying zero, or .2, .1. And you say, well, how can you get away with that? Well, there's a lot of funds that just have to invest money regardless of the rate. And so their mandate is to invest the money, not leave it in the bank, so they'll put it in anything. These companies are rated, like I said, by S&amp;P and Moody's, they're standards in the, in the community. And as far as Bank of America and Wells go, what we saw with this big breakdown was that the system works. Treasury, Federal Reserve, 12 reserve banks, now there's nine major banks. Without those nine major banks, the whole system won't work. If those banks are allowed to go under, there'd be a run on the bank, the big banks, and the system would break down. Look at what happened with Indy Bank, people were waiting in line, they were panicking, and that was a small little bank. You know, the Fed pushed in a billion dollars in money into the system, and they have their quantitative easing going, which means they're lowering rates and they're adding credit, so that you've got money to loan. But the system could not work without those major banks.
Why two banks instead of, if there are nine major banks, why concentrating in two banks only? Why not take the same amount of money and spread it over four banks, six banks?
I don't see that on the street as far as availability. Wells Fargo is a bank that we deal with, and Bank of America we deal with, I see their product direct. I don't see a lot of issuance in the other, from the other banks. Recently, to be honest with you, I don't think I've bought anything in a month and a half.
So similar to GE and, the GE and Toyota thing, similar institutions are just not out there floating commercial?
There is so much money, nobody needs it.
Because, I mean, my bottom-line question is, if you've got four that are all the same, why wouldn't you go 25% in all four of those if they were all rated, you know, the same, rather than 50% in two of them, just, you know, from the standpoint of real safety? But what you're saying is, although you have four of them rated the same, or you have the nine banks sort of rated the same, they just are not all out there selling commercial?
Producing product correctly, and I don't think I've bought any Wells Fargo or B of A in the last month and a half, because now that they can borrow at the Fed for 1%,
They don't need it.
They've got all the money they want. Now that they're getting wise to making loans, they're scrutinizing their loan program, the money's not going out the door, it's very difficult to get a loan now.
And then are you seeing anything out there, we have a tremendous amount of money in the federal home loan bank and stuff, you see anything out there with those agencies that would suggest that down the road, there may be some issues that we have to monitor?
You know, they were all enacted by acts of Congress. No, I haven't, in answer to your question, but they, once again, I look at them as an unwritten or implied guarantee, and you just saw the secretary in the banking committee testify that they'll stand behind Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae. So these are not, the people that got in trouble didn't get in trouble during this, what we have. They got in trouble with doing fancy investments called SIBs, buying Lehman, buying Bear Stearns. And those companies, I read in the paper that someone locally bought Lehman paper, and it was never AAA, and they bought three-to-five-year notes. But I wouldn't buy a brokerage note, and never would have, but it was never higher than single A.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob, for the presentation. And, second, I think we've been doing well. That's great.
I appreciate the question, Supervisor Bennett, I think that was valuable for us and the public to hear that we're still holding true to our basic tenets and our conservative approach.
Thank you.
Okay. Maybe 4% next month? 4% next month?
No, but higher than this month, 354.
Good, good, all right, I'd like to hear that. Okay, let's go on to item number 24, which is a presentation in regards to resolution proclaiming November 12th is GIS Day in Ventura County. Come on down. Let me just make a couple of statements, and then we'll, who's going to do this? Are you? Yeah, okay, good, all right. The geographic information system, GIS, is an integrated technology and an organizing principle used throughout the county of Ventura to support efficient, effective day-to-day business practice and decision. I think that's, that's very good, so I'm going to come down and present this, but why don't you come up and say what you got to say for us, thank you.
Chairman Foy, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. Thank you for the acknowledgement, and certainly for your ongoing support for GIS and its outstanding contribution to the workings of the county. GIS Day at the county is an annual event, it typically coincides closely in time with National GIS Day and National Geography Awareness Week. Tomorrow will be GIS Day at the county, it will be held here in the Board of Supervisors hearing room. There will be live presentations that will also be broadcast through Granicas. And this is just a terrific opportunity to showcase a fraction of the work being done and the work that's being advanced in the county through the use of GIS. I have a brochure for you that outlines the presentations, what will be occurring and at what time, should you have staff or yourself like to either be here or listen to the presentation on Granicas. I would like to introduce just a few of the movers and shakers that were able to join me here today. I'd like to start with Public Works, Cheryl Snyder, from Resource Management Agency, Liz Sandoval, Gloria Hannity, Jose Moreno, Ramon Hernandez. And the remainder are from IT Services County GIS, my staff Eric Alger, Richard Pascal, David Hutchison, Michelle Dunham, and Leanne Phillips, thank you.
I have to say, GIS has come such a long way in the county. I remember when, we were having GIS wars, but, and it's just an invaluable tool. And I know that the board has been using it in their offices and in closed session. We use the GIS work that you do to focus in on areas that we need to talk about, so it's really appreciated, really brought it up a notch, thank you.
I attended the presentation last year on it, and I hadn't been on the website too recent, but the last time I was on, there was a lot of construction, under construction, taking place on that. And so I guess the thing that comes to my mind is the GPS, and after reading the reports on me, you've had GIS and GPS on me since October 21st, tracking my geographic locations. So maybe you can post those, maybe you can post those to the website, so the rest of the county can see how efficient government is becoming. So thank you for your time.
All right, let's go. Chair, members of the board, this is Robinson, Jim Dembowski from Labor Relations. My apologies for the early false start, I'm sure I will hear about that in a while. Here today to recommend that you hold a second hearing on the adoption of an amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the county and the Nurses, California Nurses Association, and at the end of that hearing that you adopt the recommended amendment. The recommended action is felt to be necessary to bridge the continuous unit seniority for nurses who have accepted promotion to, from the rank and file into management, and for whatever reason there may be, gone back down to the rank and file. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have. Should we open the hearing?
I move that we approve five new tenure Land Conservation Act contracts.
I would move the recommended action.
Second, moving to second, close to public hearing, no comments, so we have a motion. Well, everybody's a comic, huh?
On a joyous day like today, yes.
Yes, great, somebody's happy over here. Thank you very much. Supervisor Bennett's possibility of being chair, and I wonder during his time, with all these kind of things we discuss like that, he can be this much on time right here at 11:00. Can you believe that?
Was that the challenge?
That's the challenge.
Oh, boy.
Because we got a bunch of people sitting out here, it's perfect.
Well, wait, I want to kind of delay the meeting for a few minutes, buy myself a little more time.
Could we, in completing the agenda, other than closed session, can we move to receiving file correspondence?
I think that's an excellent idea.
That's a motion.
That's good.
I wouldn't have missed that as a chair.